Welcome, everybody, to the Canada Forum for Casper Council. First, I'd like to give you a chance to introduce yourselves, so we'll start from the left.
My name is Sean Johnson. I'm a candidate for Ward Two. I've been with the Sheriff's Office here in Intronica County for about seven years. I've been a member of the Army National Guard for about fourteen years. I did a tour of service in Iraq for a year in two thousand and three, two thousand and four. I'm running. Concerns expressed by the members of Ward Two. I've gone door to door to talk to people about current council members and the city management. And so I'm running to represent them. You know, I'm not a, no experience in politics. I'm just a Joe Schmo from the street, representing the people.
Great, welcome.
I'm Keneen Schlager. I am finishing my second term on council. The reason I want to continue with council is we'll be losing a lot of experience on our council with some of our members leaving. So that'll leave me as the senior member, and a lot of times you really need that historical knowledge for new council members. So I'm hoping to be there to support all of council and just continue with the work that we've been doing.
My name is William Street. I've lived here in Casper, Casper Mountain, all my life. I have a wife and kids. Kids. My wife owns M and D Ceramics. I own a water facility on top of mountain, on top of Casper Mountain, and I am an assistant construction manager, construction superintendent for AP Wyoming. The reason I'm running is because I see a lot of diversity on the current city council board, and I think I can make a difference with my knowledge of and history of Casper, and I think I would be an added asset to the city council.
My name's Paul Meyer. I'm a lifetime resident of Casper. Still live in, I am running for a seat in Ward Two. Still live in the home that I was born in, in Ward Two. So my, my heart is on the west side of town. When you run for office or are elected in Casper, you don't solely represent any particular district in the city. So I represent all of the city, and I think there's some stuff undone. I didn't promise that four years would accomplish what I had run initially for office for. But there has been some, some complications, and I, I think I've, there's an investment made in myself through the conferences and experiences that I've gone through and been to, and I would like to use that investment to, for the betterment of the city and hopefully have a, a better couple of years than what we have had. So that's what I'm, I'm not running against anybody, but I am running for my city.
So we'll get right into the, right into the questions. First, how would you assess the job City Manager John Patterson has done so far?
Well, from what I've, I've talked to a lot of people in the ward going door to door, and that was probably one of the biggest concerns that they had was his job performance. I think his spending practices have, are concerned a lot of people, the amount of money he's spending and what he's spending it on. A lot of people feel that the infrastructure is being ignored in, in the city, most likely the streets, some of the parks that kind of go into disarray. But yet there's a lot of money being spent on, on other things that aren't really of a need to the city. So I think also the, the concern is that he seems to be working almost independent of the council, and I think he needs to be more active with the council, the council with him to achieve the needs of the city.
So obviously, I'm a big John Patterson supporter. He doesn't do anything that the majority of council hasn't directed him to do or his supervisors. So any decision that is made is based upon what the council has directed him to do. Some of the spending, you know, issues, sometimes you have to spend money to make money, and the prime example is the I sheet at the event center. What's exciting about that is we received a million dollar gift to make that happen. So in a sense, you know, we didn't really want to throw a million dollars away. So again, he really just has to do what we tell him. He's very unique from what we've had in the past in that he's passionate and engaged in the community. He participates in a variety of different activities, and, you know, I think he, he brings an excitement to the community that we haven't had for a long time. So in that aspect, I, I think he does a great job at doing what he's directed to do.
In Ward Three, I've talked to a lot of my constituents over there, and like Mr. Meyer, the whole town Casper is my constituency, but for the most part Ward Three, because they'll be electing me, they showed some real concern over the, the leadership of our city manager. It's my understanding per his contract with our city council that they shall review his, him on a yearly basis. Shall review, that means to me that he needs to be reviewed, and that's like any aspect of a life. You have to be reviewed on a, on a basis. As far as, as far as his spending and things of that nature, the, if he's overspending, he's not, if he's overspending, that's a representative, representation of what our city council, council members want. So that's a direct reflection on them. So I'm gonna leave it at that.
That's a very good question, and it's, it's a tough one for incumbents. There is information pertaining what has gone on with city council and the city manager that we just can't, we just can't share at this point. There's, there's other things that have happened behind the scenes. There's, this is ongoing litigation. There's a federal lawsuit still that, it, it puts Mr. Patterson in a very unique light. He is put in a position, he really cannot come to the press or the, the citizens with all the facts and all the truth. So this is all gone through the wash, probably several more times again. So I will, I, I am a John Patterson supporter. I think he's brought a, a wonderful new demeanor to our city. He's a little more aggressive in the recreation end of our, management of our city, but as myself, I completely support that. There's a lot of misinformation out there, and I'm sure Mr. Street, Mr. Johnson are hearing that, and it's, I, I, I can't comment to misinformation because I can't provide what the, really the facts are. A fact is that John Patterson coming in, being hired three years ago, the availability of funding to the city of Casper was approximately a hundred and sixteen million dollars at that time. That account, that balance now, and it's not immediately available, I'll write you a check cash, is now at a hundred and sixty million. So if you times that out over the previous administrations, the exact opposite has actually occurred. Our, our accounts are growing at a faster rate than they ever has, as is our city, and I believe that speaks for itself.
All right, next question, and related in some way. How would you approach the current Headquist conflict of interest issue?
I guess my take on that, you know, talking with the constituency, it was pretty much fifty-fifty on, on that issue with Councilman Headquist. Some people like him, some people don't like him, some people don't like him. I think he was railroaded anyway. My take is this, if, if there was any illegal activity on his part, using his position to gain personal profit, then I think the council and the management, the city management should have taken the proper legal steps to remove him, if there was laws being broken. If that's not the case, if he was gone after because they simply didn't like him, or they just had a personal conflict with him, then I think calling for his resignation was out of order and unprofessional. I don't know all the facts surrounding what happened. I mean, him owning a construction company, being on the city council, having city projects kind of gives off that impression to the public, from what I've gathered, that there is a conflict of interest. There may not be, but, you know, if I was in his shoes, I'd have probably approached it a little differently by being outspoken to the public on what I was actually doing instead of, I guess, hiding from the media and things like that, and the people that wanted to talk to him about it. So like I said, if I'm elected, I'd have to work with him. He's also a representative of Ward Two, and I would do that. I'd work with him, I'd work with anybody on the council and the city management to resolve the city's issues.
Maybe I should reframe it a little different for incumbents, since you've certainly been dealing with this, this issue. What would, what would you have done differently based on kind of what you know now and where we're at?
You know, the issue really became the way the, the law is written has a glitch in it, and it needs to be revised, and it's something that we're working on. Craig is a nice gentleman. I don't think there's anybody on council that would argue with that. He has a big heart and has lived in this community for a long time. I spent a lot of time with him at the very beginning of his term just because of potential concerns. We had a lot of conversations, and unfortunately, I think there were still some actions that he undertook that led to where we're at now. I probably wouldn't change anything that we've done. Unfortunately, we are just working with what our attorneys are telling us to do. So I think the public looks forward to a resolution. They're tired of hearing about it. We're tired of living it. We're ready to move forward, so I'm hoping that we can do that. And I think that, you know, even though we have this lawsuit going, I think I've seen some changes in Councilman Headquist in which he is certainly trying to avoid these types of issues now.
Mr. Headquist said some derogatory things to Mr. Beamer, and, you know, that just happens in the construction industry. You say some things, you just regress saying. And, but as far as me knowing Mr. Headquist, he is a, he is a decent and kind individual. I believe that the city council overreacted by trying to run him off, and it was unfortunate.
As an incumbent, it is a much tougher question to answer, and as a fellow businessman, I've been engaged in trying to scrape a living out in this city myself for forty-five years. So I'm probably more compassionate to the, to the passion that it takes to be successful and make money, and Craig's business is a whole lot more tempestuous than mine are. My only issue is dealing with the public. His is dealing with many avenues of public, private, city, state. So with all the litigation that is going on, I would just as soon take a step back and let that litigation and citizens decide, but this is a, a work still in progress. All the information is not out there yet, and so I, I would hope that people would, I try to stay away from the subject because I think we're all tired of it, but it will rear its head again, and there will be closure in one direction or another. So I, I will have faith in our democracy and our, and our court system now for the right answers and the right path to come forward, and it will.
Next question. Let's talk about economic development, specifically looking at the downtown. The city has certainly made some moves on its own, both with the Ad Bay Purchase, looking at the, the development there that is still under discussion, Fruit Warehouse, Star Apartments. So there's certainly been a proactive role taken to a degree by the city council. What role should the city council have in developing downtown?
I think the city, we have a really unique downtown area. I love it, and I think it's got a lot of potential, and I really do think that it's the key to a vibrant city. I've always thought that the downtown area should, I mean, I've always been a fan of, of doing like street fairs and things like that in the downtown area. I've never understood why it really hasn't happened. I think the city should take a more active role in working with the DDA on developing the downtown area to bring in more people, whether it be tourism or be just, you know, the residents of Casper. I, I talked to members of the DDA, and they're pretty underfunded, I would say. Most of their funding comes from private business, and I think putting some city funds into that to, to develop the downtown area would be a great investment for the city. Maybe I think they would see a pretty good return on that.
So obviously downtown is the heart of our community, and without that vibrancy, I think it impacts the entire city. So what's exciting about the DDA is truly all of their new board members. They have new faces with energy and excitement and passion, and they're really working towards developing a plan of how to turn around our downtown. They are working actually fairly closely with the city council on trying to do that. They have some other avenues of funding that they're looking at that I think are going to be very important for their success as well. But the changes and suggestions that they're making are very important. We recently did a trip to Rapid City to take a look at their plaza, which at first I was not a supporter. I, you know, I'm picturing just a green grassy area where people just sit around, and that's certainly not what it was when we looked at it at Rapid City. So I think they are doing a lot of great work. I know Paul will talk about the Old Yellowstone District because that's another key component, but we have a community development department in the city that really is trying to focus their energy in that area. And I think, you know, we're spread thin. There's a lot of things to do in the city, but I think that what we have is truly remarkable and making great sense. It would be nice to have more money so that we could help them further, and I think that when they come to council with their requests, we'll see that happen.
The downtown is very interesting. We have been working on it for years to upgrade it, and I think this has been going on maybe fifteen years or more, upgrading downtown, modernizing apartments and things of that nature with, with brokers in town here and things of that nature. And it is a positive aspect of the Casper community. I believe that as far as the warehouse goes over here that we, that we bought, and then we had, we sold it to a couple, correct me if I'm wrong, we sold it to a, a couple developers, and the developers took it and, and they sold it. And I don't understand what's going on there, what went on there, but it's upgrading the downtown area and Sandbar.
And what do you think the council's role should be in doing that? Roughly the same or different, or what do you think, what roles are different?
Developers are developers, city councilor is city councilman. We need to make sure that these are developed properly, but the developers are the ones that should initiate things, not the city council.
You're hitting on my heart issue there. That's what brought me into office was the development of the Old Yellowstone District. I'm very, very passionate. Spent my whole day down there picking weeds between the sidewalks yesterday, so I, I really need to change my priorities, but it is passionate. The Old Yellowstone District and the downtown are identical. We're basically trying to expand, you know, our downtown living by rejuvenating the urban district that was known, and the warehousing district is the Old Yellowstone area, and hopefully we'll go forward together with downtown with a little bit different of, you know, the heritage in the Old Yellowstone District is automotive, railroads, you know, railroads are, and still are a viable part of Casper. As we go further down this Old Yellowstone path, we'll see streets dedicated to the automotive legacy, to the railroad legacy, which I think will be a, a really a good fit with potentially plazas that will be coming. The Pacific Fruit Building, the city did partake of that. They bought that property on their own, and that's, there's a little fund established for, I mean, for buying the, the good old brick buildings in our Old Yellowstone District and downtown for loft living, for redevelopment, as this particular entity will become a restaurant, liquor store, multipurposes that are, and an artist, and a gallery also in the, in the thing. So it, I, it, it does fit the needs. The dubiousness, the, the, the smartness of, of buying property, the city to reuse it is questionable at best. Sometimes that stimulus is necessary, though, to, to, it's, it's to maintain the, the heritage of the neighborhood and the, and the brick and, and mortar we see in the Old Yellowstone District in downtown. I don't think anybody wants to see these old buildings tore down and replaced with styrofoam covered with plaster and, and with steel inners to them. So it, it's kind of a fine line we walk to keep them, the history of Casper, the Sandbar and all that intact down in that, in that downtown and, and the Old Yellowstone District. Developers develop. They're there to make money, and sometimes takes a little bit of a push, and I, I think we've done a good job so far, but we do need to be very careful. In this particular case, the only fact that Mr. Street probably got wrong, it never did go to any developer's hands. It went straight from city buying it from the original owners into the hands of Mr. and Mrs. Boatright, the Westland Gallery, the people that have been involved, which I think was a good move this time, but we do need to be careful. I, I'll wrap it up with, you know, all the development downtown is kind of what's happening across the country. It's contrary to where our city, everybody wanted away, everybody wanted away, wanted away. Now everybody wa, it was price of gasoline's increasing, and people want to be in their downtown cores. Loft living is becoming a very major entity all the way across the country. But if you really think about it, it's about retaining our kids. You know, kids want a viable, fun downtown. They want to be entertained. They want to, they want to drink. They want to do, I, I think we have a nice link between Casper College and our downtown pertaining to bike paths, some of the other directions Casper's going. So as my worthy opponent said, I'm excited to live in Casper at this time with a conference center coming further down on the river. I just went by the stoplights that are going up on Poplar, and my little heart goes pitter patter. I think it's a very exciting time in Casper, and I want my grandkids to have an option to go to school in Laramie and come back home to Casper, and that's why I will support anything I can downtown or Old Yellowstone to make a more entertaining, vibrant section of our city.
Do you mind if I ask another economic development question? So CADA is the city, contracted with the city for economic development. Assess, if you will, CADA's performance and maybe your perspective on where they can be doing work that will help move the city forward from an economic development perspective. And maybe we'll give you the chance to answer this one first, Mr. Schlager.
You sure?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So CADA is kind of exciting and unique in that they do a lot of work that they aren't really able to publicly announce, whether it's attracting a new company. You know, you don't really get to hear what companies they are working with. It's a challenge for them because we sometimes don't have the infrastructure that we need for them to attract those new companies to town. Another unique thing that we're working on was that renegotiation with the Rocky Mountain Power, so that there will be a little portion of money that will directly fund CADA for purposes of, of trying to get that infrastructure and power out there, but also helping them attract new businesses. So their role is really important in bringing diversity to our community so that we don't experience that boom-bust cycle that we've been experiencing. They've had some changes within themselves, so I think they're really sometimes trying to get their feet under them so they can continue the good work that they do. But I think that the city doesn't have enough time to really truly focus and do a good job in that area, and that's why we have CADA, to really be that city's arm to accomplish some of those tasks.
We need CADA. We need them. We have, like Mr. Schlager said, or, you know, to alleviate the boom-bust cycles, we need diversity. And by diversifying, we are going to be a, a more of a stronger, we'll have a stronger economy in Casper. We have a darn good economy right now than we had three, two or three years ago. So with all the, with all the monies coming in, CEDA coming in, and I believe we're ranked second in the, Wyoming's ranked second in the United States for development, which is good. And with CADA being here in town, I will, you know, I believe that it's a plus.
Mr. Meyer?
I was on the CADA board for a year or so, and it was way too over my head. I couldn't, couldn't hardly take all the confidentiality and the things they go through. As Councilman Schlager has stated, it's, most of what CADA accomplishes, nobody ever sees. What I've experienced on city council, there's enough interest in, in major economic development in our city that, and council, as the part timers that we really are, and the confidentiality that's involved in the, the levels of the things that CADA accomplishes, it, you really do need a, some kind of a separate arm of economic development. And I, we've had some, some changes through the years at CADA. We've had, you know, I don't know if you call them problems. Problems are nothing but changes, and, but we've got a very, very good director right now. What Councilman Bertollio accomplished this year is a one percent increase in the user fees, I believe, is now the funding source for CADA in the years to come as opposed to being a one cent funded issue. So I, I believe that is, was a really wise idea on his part, and I appreciate council for supporting that because there will be no one cent monies used for CADA anymore. And the, the things I experienced were, were very, very major league, big developments that if wind of word of this got out in the city, it would probably destroy or alter this, these developments, and I think they do a very good job of, of keeping it confidential and, and moving forward. I think we need to get the right people in place, and I think we have them now.
I think economic developer, diversity in this city is, is key because we are so dependent upon the energy sector as the main thing for our economy. And we do go through pretty big boom and bust cycles, so economic diversification is very important to me, and I think CADA is an important part of that.
So it, it costs the city money to respond to homelessness in, in any way, whether it's social services, whether it's through law enforcement. What is the city council's role in dealing with homelessness? What should it be?
I work in law enforcement, so I see the homelessness on, on a firsthand basis. That and mental health issues, that's a whole other issue, but it's not, I don't think it's a giant issue, but it's there. I think there should be, I'm not really sure how the city council itself would take care of it, but, you know, maybe more funding in, in a way of like a homeless shelter or helping the current homeless shelter that we have. There's always going to be a homelessness issue in any city you go to. It's always going to be there. But I guess the best way would be to, I guess, throw money to, to the direction of the homeless shelters.
So the council's obviously not experts in the homelessness issue, and so what we do is we send funding over to the Community Action Partnership, where they truly are the people that are in the middle of homelessness and, and the variety of issues that, that come with that. One of the things that we've done recently was apply money towards the Housing First Program, which was the old Star Apartments, I believe. It's a neat program, something new for our community, in which I think we take individuals that are homeless, you know, we take care of that immediate housing need, but then there's a whole wraparound program to help them get on their feet and eventually save money to have a home, you know, to buy their own home and have a down payment. So there's always more money that we can put towards homelessness, but sometimes you have to find a balance in, in that whole situation. So, you know, I think, I think supporting the group that truly knows the community and what's happening with homelessness is probably the best move that we've made and will continue to make. We have a great relationship with the individual that runs that program, and she's pretty comfortable in coming to council and saying, you know, "Look, I need, I need this," and council's excellent in supporting that program.
Right now, I don't see the homelessness being quite an issue. I believe we can put a little bit of money toward that, but we've got to watch what we're putting it to. For example, like housing facility, facilities and things of that nature, we can possibly, if we have the, the money, we can put some to. And that's my thoughts on it. And uh, that's my thoughts on it.
It's a hard questions, you guys, you're not being easy on us. I, 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 I just, being at the end, I, I have to emphasize what Councilman Schlaugher has said, that the balance, the balance is the hardest thing that we have to accomplish on council. Cap and Brent Heigoff, Johnson, Jones, Johnson.
Johnson, I think.
Johnson, great, great people, great. They have, they do wonderful job, we have no business sticking our nose, they on a part-time basis into the, the numbers that they deal with, the persons they deal with, cause it, it changes every week and they, they do such a good job. I, 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 not to be argumentative with my, uh, with Mr. Street or Mr. Johnson, it's homelessness is a huge cause if you're homeless. If you're food needy, it's a huge cause. And I, in this viable economy here, it's hard to imagine the kind of heartache that occurs in our city every day because of uh, the homelessness, the food issues, the abuse issues, you name it. I, it, it happens in our city and it's, it happens behind closed doors. It happens next to a river where nobody's witness to it. So, I do not wish to belittle those causes, I'm only one paycheck away from joining them myself. Um, well, maybe two, I've done pretty good the last couple of years. But it uh, uh, it, it's the hardest part that they will experience and that we experience as councilmen in the funding issue is the balance that it takes to, to keep that moving forward, to, to, to put low income housing in the proper locations in town, not to hurt people that have worked hard to establish their own homes. And so, it, it is hard and it, and there's definitely a, an art to the balance of that versus our recreational needs and our street needs. And, and hopefully they'll both experience that and, and see that it, it's just a balancing act is all it is.
Jeremy, do you think we have time for one or two more questions?
Uh, one or two.
Uh, I'd go with one.
Okay, I think we gotta start here, let's start with Mr. Street.
I wanted to add something to that, I think one of the biggest issues with how the homeless um, population seen at firsthand is the, is mental health. And that's another thing in this, in the state that's almost non-existent. Um, we really don't have any help um, as far as mental health goes. Alcoholism and drug abuse are probably the biggest factors um, contributing to homelessness. Um, so until really we can find something to help those um, mentally, it's gonna be difficult um, to I guess address the homelessness issue because really, you can build housing, you can do all these things, but until they're right in the head, I guess, um, and, and get help for the issues that they're experiencing, it's really not gonna stop.
Nice question, uh, let's talk about Hogedon, uh, certainly, certainly a big topic that uh, that the city council does address. And uh, just wondering what should the council do with Hogedon and has the council already done too much or too little? Let's start with Mr. Street.
That's a very interesting, uh, you just talked about that out in the lobby. The reason, uh, every since uh, Hogedon's conception, it's lost money, whether it be private owner or a public owner. Uh, uh, we've lost money this year on Hogedon. And uh, with the Nordic Ski Trails versus Hogedon, Nordic Ski Trails are, are super for the uh, are, are great for the winter sports here in Casper. Hogedon is uh, important, but as a taxpayer, representing my uh, constituents, I don't believe we should be spending money time and time again on a losing battle.
Yes, I agree with Mr. Street in the aspect, it, it has not been a, a lot of our enterprise endeavors are not profitable. As a matter of fact, very few of them are. It, it, it is one of those amenities that uh, citizens do expect support of the city in, in, in recreation, whether it's at the rec center, the golf course. Now our attention's turned to Hogedon a little bit. I, I would not disagree with Mr. Street in the, in the fact that it's, Hogedon has been used for a lot of years, been a lot of blood, sweat and tears of private individuals put into that facility. And uh, I, my quote in the paper the, yesterday, I, I wanted to eh, apologize to the Street family and, and the eight families that were actually involved in putting that together. It, it just way back in probably the forties and fifties, I'm not sure of the timeframe even, but that was at their expense and their blood, sweat and tears. And, and at some point, the city decided to take that on. I think because of the tempestuousness of the subject, it has been ignored a lot of years. And I think Mr. Patterson in the paper yesterday said, it's time to pay some attention to it or, or walk away from it. I don't believe walking away from it's an alternative. It, it's a wonderful location, it, we've made some very good infrastructure progress up there. We, as we have at the golf course, I had several calls yesterday from skiers and golfers, both. The irrigation system at the golf course is nearing completion. And I guess the, everything's just popping up, the grass is growing better in places that it hasn't. That's, I think, what, we've looked at the nuts and bolts of our enterprise functions. And uh, we need to start, s- s- if we have these amenities, they need to be usable amenities. And I won't say first class, but Hogedon is not even in the top ten. I mean, the facility is very antiquated, the safety of the facility's even got to be in question at this point. Um, I believe the solution to Hogedon is a more year-round use of the facility. It's, it's a great place up there, I rode a motorcycle up to view it the other day and forgot. It's thirty degrees cooler on the mountain, we have Bear Trap just a meadow away. We have this potential of the biathlon course, which I believe's gonna happen. Besides the Nordic skiing, they've started, they've got about a mile and a half, if I remember right, of the paths built up there. I'm lucky enough to own a small piece of property at Glendo and I've turned that, seen that lake in the last two years turn from a, a fishing and Colorado vacation area to, there's about twenty percent of the people coming into the state park now are there to bike ride. It's, the, the Casper has the amenities, the mountain has the amenities to be a year-round draw. And I believe if we can commonsensely appropriate money, we needed to dig the pond out to ha- uh, and we bought some efficient snowmaking machines, which made all the difference in the, in quality of the experience last year. And I believe we need to ke- continue down that path. Um, the six hundred and fifty thousand for a maintenance building scared us. Now they've pruned that down to a very reasonable amount, I think it's about a third of what it was. And I don't, I'd leave that up to, to the citizens, but I don't believe in a common sense, slow fashion citizens object to us bringing these recreational amenities up to the twenty-first century. Um, that will be for the voters to decide. In the one cent survey, the one, s- one little bit disappointing thing was Hogedon was quite a ways down. I think it was number eight and that document uh, for the one cent is our bible. I mean, if it's the, the number eight priority, we have seven priorities the citizens have set before that. But I do believe we can slowly continue to update the infrastructure up there. I know they need a maintenance facility and possibly, um, if the citizens would pass the one cent and it goes another year, maybe we should look at a lodge, a more safer endeavor. The, the part that bothers me up there now is the safety.
Sorry to interrupt, we'll give you about thirty more seconds to wrap up the answer, I wanna make sure we all.
Okay, thank you. I'm done.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
I think it's, uh, it's been neglected, I, I'm not a skier, I've rarely been by Hogedon. I was up there the other day and took a look at it and um, read articles in the paper. And I think, you know, Mr. Patterson said it best that we need to do something or walk away. It's in com- it's in disrepair, it's, we probably need a new, a, a new lodge. But if it's gonna continuously be a pit of money for the city, then it needs to, the city needs to either walk away from it or pass it on to a private um, business endeavor to take that over. But I do, I am, you know, recreation and city beautification is top on my priority list. Uh, I do think it's important to attract people to Casper. Um, so if we want to keep it, then we need to start paying more attention to it and putting more money into it. And make sure that it, it, it becomes profitable and ha- and has a, uh, that the city sees a return on their investment in that.
That's okay, because it's gonna be very similar to what everybody said. Um, so obviously Hogedon has been neglected and we've actually had the discussions on council of just getting rid of it. And really it's not an option, especially I think with the condition that it's in now, I don't think that anybody would want to purchase that. Um, I'm not sure ski facilities are always a moneymaker anyway. So I think we have to incrementally support Hogedon. The challenge is that there are citizens and, that think Hogedon's a waste of money, but we have to truly fund a variety of different activities so that we can encourage new people to our community, encourage visitors to spend money here. And if somebody new goes up and skis, I think our numbers have really grown. We have the magic carpet now, um, they've outgrown the space. So, the potential is there for, I think, Hogedon to make money, we just need to give them the tools and the facilities to make that happen.
Can I expand on that? Are you, I'm sorry.
No, I'm good. I could, we're, we're all politicians, we're gonna talk a lot.
That's right. Since nineteen, uh, in, since the nineteen forties, everybody that's owned Hogedon has lost money to the present date. It's got a good track record of losing money. Mr. Myers alluded to one thing. He says, if we're gonna keep it, let's make it a year-round facility, not just for skiing. And that was the most sensible thing I've heard in a long time. Everybody has uh, used Hogedon for a winter activity. We need to use that year-round. It hasn't been done in the past, it, it's a possibility for the future. But if we just keep it a uh, ski resort and uh, we're gonna continue to lose money. We can put uh, millions of dollars in it and we're still going to lose.
All right, well now, I'll give you a chance to uh, to uh, add some bottom box. I'll just start with you, Mr. Meyer.
I love our city, I would love to serve for more years. I will leave that up to the citizens of Casper to decide, I have a track record behind me now to judge myself on. You won't see me out there knocking on a lot of doors, I'm very available at my eighteen twelve Custer home. I, I uh, I have a reunion this summer, I have enough stuff on my own plate that I don't want to be out there without, I, 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 I would, yeah, I would, I, I will gladly serve and do my very best for the next four years if citizens wish me to be there, thank you.
Um, I thank Mr. Meyer for his service, he's uh, I think he's done a pretty decent job. Um, and that's, you know, one, one of the benefits of uh, being on the council, being in the incumbent, is you have that experience. Um, I obviously don't, this is my first venture in politics. So, having said that, I'm, I think, uh, having uh, the new, the new generation basically I think to take over um, running the city of Casper, having the new fresh ideas, fresh faces. Um, you know, I've been in the army fourteen years, I'm a non-commissioned officer, I lead troops, I know what it takes to lead, um, to, to stand up and take charge. Uh, there seems to be, to me and the constituents, a lack of leadership on um, the council, especially with the drama and the uh, the bickering that's gone on back and forth. They see it on the federal and state level, I, I, I don't think they wanna see it on a local level. Um, it hits too close to home for them and that's one of the reasons I'm running. Um, so um, I'll leave it up to the people and I will be knocking on doors um, to get my name out there and to let the people know what I'm about.
You know, with eight years' experience, we've seen a lot of interesting times. I actually think it has taken a lot of strong leadership to attack and fight some of the battles that we have undertaken, whether it's development or issues on council, um, it's a, it's unfortunate, but it's something that happened and had to be addressed and I think it took a lot of strength to stand our ground and, and to accomplish that. I know the public's tired of hearing of it though, so I'm looking forward to new things, better things, uh, more changes. It's important to have diversity on council and, you know, I, I think that everybody brings something to the table. I bring a social work background, um, a business administration background. So, I've been mayor three times, I, I look forward to serving. Um, like Councilman Meyer, Mayor Meyer said, that, you know, the public decides. I hope I've done a good job and they'll let me know when it's time to vote.
I think I, uh, I love, first I, uh, I like, uh, I love Casper, I'll uh, live here the rest of my life. Uh, it is a growing commu- community, uh, the uh, uh, the past administrations have done a great job. Uh, there's a lot of bickering, uh, uh, and feuding going on right now with our, amongst our uh, city councilmen and women. And uh, I think uh, it is uh, time uh, for a change because I see the frustration in their faces. Uh, I've attended uh, uh, several uh, uh, council meetings and uh, the tension, when you walk in that uh, that chamber, between the councilmen, you can cut with a knife. That's how much tension that I feel is there. And uh, we have to start working uh, and get uh, uh, in adhesion with one another instead of bickering and fighting all the time.
Thanks, thanks to all of you for being here, we appreciate you coming and.
Thanks for having us.